All right, so we have reconvened from closed session and there is nothing to disclose. So we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:09 PM. And switch over. I'd like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, May 25th, 2022, and it is 6:09 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, May 27th, at 1:00 PM, and Tuesday, May 31st, at 9:00 AM. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card. Those are the blue cards, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide them to the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, that will take us over to our roll call. Starting off with the roll call, I will call Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suon.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right, that'll take us to our Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to invite Michael Vargas to lead us in the pledge. You want to come up here?
(intelligible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, would you please join me in a moment of silence and maybe reflect on the tragedies that occurred in Texas and all the lives lost? Thank you. All right, next up, we have our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our next item, our closed session, Mr. Clerk.
And for our regular agenda, we do not have any closed session items, so that will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, and that first presentation being a proclamation recognizing May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
All right, at this time, I would like to bring forward our representatives from our Diversity and Inclusion Commission to join us here at the podium while I read some of the covenants from the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So I believe Mr. Parrick and Mr. Rundawa, and I believe the others are not able to join us this evening, so if you could just come forward. Oh, yep, thank you, yep. Hiding behind the screen here. All right. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander encompasses many ethnic groups with diverse backgrounds, histories, languages, and cultures, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebrates the collective accomplishments of these communities. Whereas the city of Elk Grove thanks and appreciates the Asian American and Pacific Islander members of the city's Diversity and Inclusion Commission, that includes Commissioners Jinky Dolar, Mia Foster, Dr. Bhavan Parik, Gurchitinder Rundawa, and whereas these commissioners, as well as others, members of the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, work to advance and elevate important causes to the AAPI community, strive to educate the Elk Grove community regarding AAPI significant observances and events, and serve as AAPI ambassadors in the city as well as the greater Sacramento region. And whereas the city of Elk Grove recognizes the contributions of the AAPI community and may, through observances, support and participation in events, cultural festivals, and a social media campaign that highlights notable individuals throughout the AAPI community as well as Mong American Day just recently on May 14th. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Elk Grove and encourages the community to promote unity in diversity and international understanding, to develop fuller awareness of linguistic and cultural traditions throughout the world, and to inspire solidarity based on understanding and dialogue. Signed, the Mayor and City Council. Thank you. So if you want to say a few words, and we're going to come down and take a picture.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. We are very fortunate and blessed to have received such recognition, and on behalf of our AAPI community of Elk Grove, we sincerely offer our thanks and appreciation for recognizing us. As with the new census, everyone now knows that API community is making a larger portion of the population, and we encourage the city to provide more resources to uplift not just our community but the rest of the community too. And we are feeling very proud to live in the city of Elk Grove. It's a very diverse, inclusive, inclusive city. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parrick. So please join us in a photo, and we'll be right down there.
Jessica, our chairman, please join us.
Here, we'll, you hold this. Here, you can, this is for you.
Everybody kind of take a couple of steps.
You put one hand here, and then.
Take a couple of steps left, please.
Hold this side, there we go.
We grab one with this one first, and then I'll get to that next one. Can you guys get a little closer, a little bit, please? All right, ready? One, two, three. One more with this phone. There we go.
And then the city.
This one's for Gurchitinder. Ready, one, two, three. One more.
Thank you.
Is that a third one?
Okay, and then we've got Citizen right behind.
Oh, sorry, Lance. One, two, three.
Thank you, and then one more for their paper.
There you go.
Thank you again.
Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I know Ms. Dolar wanted to be here, and so did Ms. Foster, whose father is gravely ill and in hospice. So we send our prayers to uplift the family through this difficult time. And then of note as well, Sophia Nguyen, who is an Elk Grove resident, was just recently crowned Miss Teen Vietnam USA, who is an Elk Grove resident, so we just also want to celebrate and recognize her for her accomplishments during this AAPI Heritage Month. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to our next item, presentation from Sean Gallagher. Hi.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, my name is Sean Gallagher, Deputy Public Works Director overseeing the Operations Division, and I'm here tonight to give kind of a overview of the city's new mobile app, See Click Fix, and kind of talk about that. So what is See Click Fix? In its basic form, it's a mobile online request management system, giving users the ability to report issues or ask questions very easily. It's an industry leader, and it's widely used by a lot of surrounding agencies, with close to 300 agencies in California that are using it currently. So what does it do? It organizes and tracks service requests, putting at residents' fingertips the ability to report an issue at the moment they see it, taking a picture, sending it to the appropriate department without having to know who to call just by hitting submit. Users are notified when a request is received, and then throughout that process, if it is moved forward to a work order or possibly once it's complete. The user has the ability to see that process throughout, so seeing a very transparent, open, all citizens can see any request submitted on the map at any one time, so they can see the most current requests that are in, and also the ones that have been completed in the last seven days. See Click Fix can be accessed really in two ways. It can be accessed through a mobile phone or through the city's website, and you can submit requests day or night, does not matter, though we do not monitor it 24/7, we're only monitoring it during normal business hours. Photos can be submitted, and it's one-to-many photos, which makes it very nice if it's a bigger issue. One of the reasons that we went with See Click Fix was the ability to connect to the city's two work management softwares. The city has two software work management systems that are used by multiple departments, City Works being the one that is used widely throughout Public Works, whereas TrackIt is used by most of the other departments. We were looking for one that would integrate with both of these systems, so we created a very easy flow so residents didn't have to know where to go to. Requests come in, it's then divvied up between the systems automatically. And the system gives us the ability to kind of track, gives us the ability to see where we're hearing complaints from, what type of complaints. So obviously code enforcement being one of our popular ones here, and this is just for the month of May. And this gives us the ability to kind of address those concerns, know where we need to put our resources on a daily basis. On the Public Works side, we use something similar. We have a different kind of charts through our City Works program, but it's very similar where we're tracking and then assigning our work resources to those areas that we're seeing complaints come from. So where can you access it? It's available both through Google Play or the Apple App Store. And kind of talking about the app, it's a very simple process. You can go to one of the two Apple Store, the app stores, register, complete some basic questions, choose how you want to receive your notifications, and then choose the plus sign to get started. And to really get started, that plus sign is the way to do it. So that takes you to that first step where you're going to either take a picture, use an existing picture, or maybe you don't have a photo because you saw it and you drove by and you didn't get a picture, but you can still submit that area. You choose your location. If you're standing at that, it automatically, if you have your location services turned on, goes right to that, or you can drag that little X around on the map to find the exact location where you saw that issue. You choose your category, and there's tons of categories mattering on what it is. More Public Works categories are at the top, the rest of the city's services are towards the bottom. And then, once you do that, you go to the next step, and that would normally show a photo. I didn't have a photo to add for a pothole, but you'd add some, maybe some description, answer a few additional questions. A lot of the requests in here have additional questions. This helps staff kind of figure out where they need to go to get some specific information, and then you hit submit, and you're done. And that goes to city staff. That integration automatically for all but one category, which is another category, automatically goes into TrackIt or City Works to allow city staff. So if it's a police department issue, it goes to the police department. If it's the Public Works, it goes to Public Works. No one needs to monitor that, and the integration happens very easily. But if staff sees maybe, oh, it was submitted to the wrong department, staff can very easily correct that and resubmit it back to the correct department through that same integration. When you're in the app, there is several other little features in here. There is a notices section, which you can see a little mail, little envelope right there if you click on that. That gives the city the ability to send out notices. We haven't used it thus far, but it gives us the ability to maybe send out something widespread like, you know, hey, traffic issue on this location. There's the map portion. This is where you can see all the current requests, just like if you were online, you can see all that. You can click on it, you can choose to follow that request, you can see more information about it, you can add additional information to it. And then lastly, on the profile, you can see all of your current, your requests, both current and historically, and you can open those up. And maybe you said, hey, it didn't get addressed the way I wanted it to. Let me open that request back up, and you can communicate back to staff with those issues. And then See Click Fix online, on the city's website, ElkGrove.org backslash See Click Fix. You can go there, similar system, similar process, it's just on the website. The map's bigger, obviously, it's a little easier to navigate if you're trying to dig down and see requests, but also another option. We went live on February 14th. As of a few minutes ago, when I checked my app, we're at 675 requests thus far. It's getting more popular. We're going to be expanding kind of our media, getting more people to know about it, encouraging the use. It's a great tool for my staff. I know it's a great tool for the other department staff. It's made it very easy to kind of get to the residents and connect directly with them on their issues very seamlessly. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Excellent, excellent presentation. I think this will definitely expand our customer service relations with our community through the use of technology, and maybe we can invite Mr. Armstrong to write an article so that more people are aware of this technology, but thank you for that. I'll start with my colleagues to the right. Ms. Nguyen, any questions?
No, you now have 676.
Mr. Spees.
Yes, so first I wanted to say thanks to staff for getting this, selecting this. There was previous concern with the previous technology we're using. I have followed up with the folks who had concerns about it before. One person hasn't used it yet, but the others who have used it are very happy about it. They're able to see resolution of the issues. One thing that I didn't, or that I just found out about, I'm an avid user, I don't report much, but I mean, I look frequently, right? But what's interesting on the notifications, I would assume then you could do something like a street closure for an event or something like that?
Yeah, we could definitely do something like that. We haven't discussed how to really specifically do it. We don't want to send too much stuff out. It's kind of the thought process, maybe just targeting, but we really want to grow the audience before we start really depending on it to notify the public.
Sure. Well, so it would be interesting to see if there's some sort of interface with Nextdoor that could be done so that you could reach out to those particular communities that are already registered there and be able to see, oh, Old Town's going to slow down or have a, whatever, one lane closure for a, I don't know, for an event. But I'm really thrilled to see it. Like I said, everything I've heard is positive, and I really appreciate it.
Council, we'll go to Vice Mayor Suon.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And I like, Mayor, I like your idea about asking Mr. Armstrong to write about it. I think there's a, this is, yeah, it's a good way to get the word out. I have a question, Sean, it could purely be user error, but about a month or two ago, I used the app to report a dead raccoon on Elk Grove Boulevard, and a couple of things. One, I didn't hit the plus sign, maybe that's what my problem is. I hit the, you know, report a dead animal, so I hit submit, but I didn't know if anybody got it, so.
Okay.
Right?
So.
So I wonder, did I do something wrong, or do you have to use the plus sign?
So the, the report dead animal will probably take you directly to Animal Control. So some of the additional tabs will pop up a phone number, take you to the website, but it won't technically report it to anybody. So to report an issue, you'd have to still go to Report a Concern or the Plus. The rest are kind of links or pop-up phone numbers, like the non-emergency will pop up the non-emergency phone number, so you can just click on that phone number and it connects you with Elk Grove PD. Whereas some of the other ones will take you to the website, like the utility page. So it may have been that you clicked on that, but if you went through the report concern, I'd be happy to kind of try to troubleshoot it and see what happened.
Well, yeah, we go offline, but it is, it gives you a, you know, you type in the cross street, you drop a pin, and so it gives you all that.
Okay, it must have been some sort of issue. I can definitely look at that and try to see what's going on.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
What I'm hearing is it was you.
I'm sure it's user error, yeah.
It was all you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. No comments. I just, I love seeing progress like this to make it easier for people to interface with the city, and also makes it easier for the city to keep track of our workload so we, as you say, we can reprioritize resources as needed. So, very cool.
Yep, and just the more people that know about it, I think this is great, another tool for us to connect with our community. And I'm just thinking back to those horrific storms over the winter and the torrential downpour and those streets that we had concerns. This is perfectly lined up to address that proactively.
Yeah, and one of the things that we can do is we can change that top bar when it's big storm. So Report Flooding can pop, we can put that with a link right at the top so they can click on it, and that phone number connects them with the dispatch staff. And so those kind of different kinds of events, we can make adjustments to that, what you're seeing on that main page, which makes it very usable for the public, because we're adjusting as, you know, we need to.
Real time.
Yeah.
And much better than Nextdoor.
Yes. Fact-based.
Faster response.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation.
All right.
I look forward to seeing this grow. All right, moving on to public comments.
For Section 5 Public Comment, this will be the opportunity for members in the participating audience to use the blue card to sign up to speak. For members of the audience, they can comment on any item not on the agenda that is of the interest of the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item.
All right, thank you. And with that, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I see one speaker signed up, Liz Irons. Welcome.
Good evening. Today I'm here because lately I've been seeing panhandlers around, and I do believe I sent you all an email, I believe it was March 7th. My concern with the panhandlers is they are starting to get aggressive. I have noticed on Bruceville and Laguna Boulevard, right where Bamboo Inn is, there was a woman, you know, she had her sign, and she also had a child with her. She also has flowers, and she was running in and out of traffic. Now, if I had accidentally hit her or something like that, my life is over as I know it. I would lose everything, most likely, and I don't want that to happen. I don't want that to happen to any other Elk Groveans either. The other thing that bothered me about this person is that she had a child with her. Now, number one, if this is during daytime hours, why isn't that child in school? I don't buy the fact that the child could have been homeschooled because I didn't see any academic material. And it's the, it's the sympathy factor, I think. I don't believe that these individuals are homeless, even though the sign says they are, or they need rent, food, et cetera, because number one, I hate to say it, they look too well-fed, and they had enough money to get flowers. The signs that I've seen around town are all the same, white poster board with the same black printing with, by a Sharpie. Now, so I will call Non-Emergency PD if I see something that I really don't feel comfortable with, like one woman was in Trader Joe's with a very small child, and it was like 37 degrees. That's too cold, so, but I don't want to tie up resources. So, in reference to that, is there anything we can do? I understand the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals a while ago has said, oh, it's their constitutional right. I have seen in the newsletter that you have said that if you're going to give money, give it to an organization, which I will do, I mean, I'll give it to Heart or Chicks in Crisis, et cetera, because I know where the money goes. I know it'll be useful. Also, as a city, we have to try and determine how many of these individuals actually need services. So if you give them a dollar here or a dollar there, that doesn't track the resources that could be allocated by the state. So, that's, that's it. If you have any other questions, I managed to finish up in time. And I, also, I also appreciate all your support from Elk Grove Anti-Trush Cleanups. We have noticed there is less trash now in Elk Grove. Isn't that great?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you. And if the city manager can direct appropriate staff to do any follow-up as needed. I don't see anybody else signed up.
Can I ask a question to staff?
Yes, please.
So, I'm sorry, chief, in the instance when someone is weeding or weaving in and out of traffic or impeding traffic, there is something that can be done there, right? I mean, if you can give me a little bit of background on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, for sure, and luckily tonight we actually have our homeless outreach officer in the room, and she's familiar with that family. And we absolutely can, and if they're weaving in and out of traffic, please call 911. I would say that's a little bit greater than just a non-emergency because we don't want anybody to hit them, and thank you for bringing it to our attention, but we absolutely can, and we will respond to that. And like I said, Officer McHugh will be able to talk to you this afternoon and maybe get some direction for you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other speakers, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and move to our next item, Item 6. City manager to provide a report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, several items to report on this evening. May has been a busy month for our events staff since the last meeting, a couple weeks ago, we had a lot of things going on. So May 14th, we had a party on the Palms, had about 300 teenagers come to right out front of here of City Hall and Police Department. Great, great activities, great event. A few days later, May 18th, at District 56, we had Big Truck Day. It was a hot day, but we had really thousands of people. I think the estimate was 2,500 people that came out to see that, and it was really, really well-done, and want to appreciate all of our staff and partners for putting that on because it was a big success and great location to have it. And then our Youth Commission also hosted the Path to Positivity, where we think there were about 200 youth and parents that showed up for that. Coming up this summer, we have a lot of other events in the coming months. We have Cultural Connections Event celebrating Juneteenth, and that will be celebrated on June 16th. We also, of course, have our annual Salute to the Red, White, and Blue, which is on the Fourth of July. And our multicultural festival will return on August 27th at District 56, and these events are in addition to the weekly farmers' markets and other, and food truck events that we have at our various locations. So information about all of these are on our city's website. Primary elections coming up pretty soon on June 7th, so information for our voters beginning this Saturday, May 28th. Sacramento County Office of Elections will host a Vote Center at the Center District 56 in the Veterans Hall. Operating hours will be 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM daily through June 6th, and on a election day, hours will be 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We're also going to have Vote Center here in the council chambers from June 4th through June 7th. There's also a drop-off box for ballots across the street at City Hall, 8401 Laguna Palms. That's open every weekday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Pools in Elk Grove will open up this Saturday, May 28th, for recreation swim, so look forward to a great recreation season coming up. Pre-sale tickets are available on website, YourCSD.com/recreation-swim. The return of FlyFit is exciting, so Elk Grove Police Department is proud to partner again with Fly Brave Foundation. Visions in Motion ADP, Elk Grove, and Amped Fitness to offer FlyFit again. This free five-week fitness program is available to kids, teens, and adults with autism and other developmental, intellectual disabilities and their families. The program partners police department staff with individuals with different abilities to learn about one another and build relationships. Program will run every Wednesday through the month of June from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at the Preserve at District 56. Registration details and more information can be found on the website, FlyBrave.org. Regional Safety Day is coming up. The Police Department and Kasumna Fire Department will host Regional Safety Day on Saturday, June 4th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Elk Grove Park. Free event will host a Day of Fun, Education, and Excitement for All Ages, featuring emergency response vehicles, canine demonstrations, helicopter landing, and more. Again, information is on the website as well as the City and CSD Facebook pages. And finally, Caltrans is currently seeking input for Highway 99 Clean California Beautification and Safety Improvement Project. This project will provide upgrades to pedestrian vehicle over crossings along 99 between Calvine and Broadway. A survey asking the community to share their experience driving, cycling, and walking in this area is active through May 31st. For more information, please visit CleanCA.com. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right, thank you for your report. Any of my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you again. We will move on to our next item, our Consent Calendar items. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity, and I don't see anybody signed up, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move consent, but I'd like to abstain from Item 7.20 due to my employment and an abundance of caution.
All right, duly noted. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. We will move right along to our next item. We are in, on 8, our public hearings, Item 8.1. A public hearing to consider a resolution confirming the Laguna West Service Area Fiscal Year 2022-23 Annual Report and ordering the Year 2022-23 Annual Report and ordering the levy for the Laguna West Service Area. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Renee Atara, Finance Analyst for the city. I'm not here this evening with annexations. I'm here this evening with a brief presentation for your consideration to adopt a resolution confirming the Laguna West Service Area Annual Report and ordering the levy for fiscal year 2223. Some background information, the Laguna West Service Area was originally established in 1992 by the County of Sacramento, where it was known as County Service Area CSA 5. The city of Elk Grove assumed administration in 2003, when the Laguna West Area was annexed into the city and became known as the Laguna West Service Area. The service area provides miscellaneous services to the Laguna West Area, such as street sweeping, road maintenance, drainage service, and administration. Here's a map of the service area. The area is approximately bounded by Laguna Boulevard and Elk Grove Boulevard and I-5 and Franklin Boulevard. This map hasn't changed since the service area was created by the county in 1992. The Sacramento County Board of Supervisors adopted ordinance number 1418, which established the service charge allocation formulas, and also the procedure for collecting CSA 5 service charges on the property tax roll. To levy the service charges, the governing jurisdiction, which again was formerly the county, but now is the city, must confirm an annual report, annual written report detailing the individual parcels and the respective service charges. The formation documents establish the basis for annual increases. Since the levy is being assessed at the maximum rate, the levy cannot be increased. Staff recommends maintaining current service levels to provide an adequate revenue stream for projects and services, to maintain sufficient reserves for future projects, and to maintain consistency with the fiscal year 2223 budget document. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution for Laguna West Service Area for fiscal year 2223, which will confirm the annual report and order the levy. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you for your report. I will now declare the public hearing open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anybody signed up to speak, so I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is not closed, and open it up for any questions. If not, I'll look for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next item, 9.1. Consider a resolution levying the fiscal year 2022-23 special taxes or special assessments for seven community facilities and special districts.
Okay. I'm back again. I'm here this evening again to present the community facilities districts and assessment districts in the city of Elk Grove and their new rates for fiscal year 2223. I request your consideration of them and to adopt a resolution to continue to levy these taxes and assessments for fiscal year 2223.
All right, nice and brief. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity.
That was just first slide.
Oh, that was really brief. See, I'm really excited here.
I can stop here, I don't mind.
It just seemed like this long pause, I'm like, all right, well, she's ready.
Just some background information, the taxes and assessments that I will be presenting are not new taxes and assessments. They have all existed for a number of years. The city administers seven special tax districts. They provide funding for infrastructure improvements, which may be bonded or not, police services, maintenance services, street maintenance, and street lighting maintenance. The funding is planned to match the service needs of each district. To maintain that alignment and to include future projects, the rates are gradually increased annually. Just a quick list of the current seven districts in the city. There are five community facilities districts, also known as CFDs, and Melrose Taxes. As you can see, some of the CFDs also have both infrastructure and service components. And then there are two assessment districts. Taking a further look at these districts, there are three community facilities districts with an infrastructure component located in and known as East Franklin, Poppy Ridge, and Laguna Ridge. These CFDs are bonded, which means that they are supported by debt. They fund the construction of new improvements and projects, such as roadways, sewer, drainage, and public projects. Recent projects include the District 56 facilities, the Nature Preserve Civic Center, Community Center, and Aquatic Center, and also the Camera Road Improvement. Looking at the services districts, there are four CFDs that are service districts, with two for police services and two for maintenance services. CFD 2003-1, Poppy Ridge Police Services, for police services within that district. CFD 2003-2, Police Services, for police services for the rest of the city. CFD 2005-1, Laguna Ridge Maintenance Services, for maintenance services within that district only. CFD 2006-1, Maintenance Services, for maintenance services for the rest of the city. This particular district has 17 tax zones, which are based on the onsite maintenance requirements of the project. And then the two assessment districts that are considered, they are also considered service districts. So, the Street Maintenance District Number One, which has five geographic zones throughout the city, and then Street Lighting Maintenance District One, which has two geographic zones throughout the city. The goal of, the goal is to fund ongoing authorized services, such as police, streets, streetlights, and landscape of public parks and open spaces. These districts are not bonded, and they are levied forever. Just a quick table, quick summary, a quick table of all the special tax districts. For annual increases, when each district and applicable to zones were created, formation documents were drafted as well. They provide guidance on how each district is assessed, the levies, and provide guidance on the rates, on how the rates increase. This table, it's a lot of information, shows all of the districts and what the basis for each of the increases are, along with the percentage increase and the dollar amount increase on a single-family home. East Franklin, Poppy Ridge Facilities, and Street Lighting Maintenance District Number One, Zone One, do not have any increases per the formation documents. Poppy Ridge Services and CFD 2003-2 Police Services are increased by the lesser of the CPI or 5%. The CPI increase was actually 5% this year, so these rates increased by that. The Laguna Ridge Facility is increased by a flat rate of 2%. The Laguna Ridge Maintenance Services also increased by 5%. CFD 2006-1 Maintenance Services is increased by the greater of the CPI or 2%, so it was increased by 5%. All five zones of the Street Maintenance District One may be increased by a construction cost index or a lower rate at the discretion of the city. The rates increased this year by the five-year average of the March Construction Cost Index of 5.56%. The Street Lighting Maintenance District One, Zone Two, increased by the CPI 5%. If you look on the far-right column, I've provided the current percentage that the city levies each district of its maximum rate. With the exception of CFD 2005-1 Laguna Ridge Maintenance Services and Street Maintenance District Number One, I'm sorry, no, Street Maintenance, yes, Street Maintenance District One, all of the levies will be assessed at 100% of the maximum rate in fiscal year 2223. For CFD 2005-1 Laguna Ridge Maintenance Services, that was levied at 70% of the maximum levy in this current fiscal year 2122 year. Staff is recommending increasing that levy to 75% of the maximum levy for fiscal year 2223. This rate has not increased since the fiscal year 2015-16, so it's been about seven years. Since that time, the city has added new facilities and new parks, the most notable being District 56 and the Nature Preserve, which only opened in the last few years. With that, and as the city continues to add facilities and more parks, the maintenance costs have increased and will continue to do so, so this rate will go up gradually in the coming years to mirror the growth of these expenses. This fund in particular is deficit spending, since the maintenance expenses are exceeding the tax revenues. For Street Maintenance District One, the construction cost index was quite high, at 15.15% this year. The engineer reports adopted at the time of the formation of each of the street maintenance zones allows the city to levy less than the maximum increases. Staff recommends increasing this, these rates in this current, in this upcoming year by the five-year average of 5.56%, which results in a levy of approximately 92% of the maximum tax. And the fund balances for this district are healthy enough to support this lower assessment. Just to wrap up, the staff recommends maintaining current service levels to provide an adequate revenue stream for projects and for services, to maintain sufficient reserves for future projects, and to maintain stable assessment levels for residents. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution to continue to levy the special taxes and assessments for the seven special tax districts for fiscal year 2223. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm available for any questions, and we also have city public work staff and, I believe, CCSD staff to help answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you for that. Now, I will open up the public comment opportunity, and I do not see anybody signed up to speak, so I will close the public comment opportunity. Any questions for Renee or staff? I'll start to the left. Councilmember Hume, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Spies.
No, I'll motion.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our next item, 9.2, the presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2022-23 annual budget.
Good evening again, Jason Barvin, City Manager. I'm going to be presenting kind of a high-level overview of the budget, go through some information with you. There's no action requested of the city council this evening. Really is to present the budget, give members of the public, council, a couple weeks to review. Then Shane Orion, our budget manager, will come up here in a couple weeks and go through some more details, and at that point, you'll have an opportunity to adopt the budget if you so choose. So, I just want to start by recognizing our amazing budget team led by Shane Orion, Matt Pollen, Finance Director, and the entire budget team, and it's much larger than that. There's a lot of individuals throughout each of our departments that are really heavily involved in budget, making sure that the taxpayer dollars are spent wisely and efficiently, and so I just want to recognize all of their efforts and appreciate kind of where we are. The city really prides itself on being good stewards and making sure that we're wisely using those resources and being smart about not only how we spend money, but that we're setting money aside for the future when the rainy days come, and they do come, they always come, and that we're prepared for those inevitabilities. So, happy to run through this information with you this evening. So, some of the key numbers. Total budget being presented is $293 million. It's a $20 million increase over the current fiscal year. A lot of that is related to capital project carryovers, so it doesn't necessarily reflect a large increase in new expenditures. A lot of it, again, is related to some existing capital projects. In the general fund, the total budget is proposed at $86 million, which is a $7.3 million increase, and that's about a 9% increase, and I kind of listed some of the major cost drivers in there that you see there. There are six new positions, as well as full-year costs of positions that the council approved several months ago. We did the Police Department Staffing Efficiency Study. We brought forward several new positions for you at that time as well. There are general salary and benefit increases for staff, operational programs and service cost increases, some one-time capital equipment purchases, some increase in different programs, Small Business Center program. There are new debt service payments associated with the new city facility improvements that we took to you within the last couple months, associated with upgrading of different police facilities, and then some expansion of risk reserves. Obviously, there's a lot more to the numbers. I'm going to go through in a little bit greater detail on a few of the major projects we have planned in the coming year. Before we get there, just, obviously, it's always important that we balance our budget and making sure we're bringing in as much or more revenues than we're spending, and so this year is no exception. It continues to fund at the full capacity or the full recommended policy, the reserve policy, at $20.6 million, which is 25%. And in addition to that, a $4.1 million opportunity reserve. It also allows for additional funding into our economic development reserve and our capital reserve for future projects and priorities of the city council. So, just kind of an overview, the proposed budget maintains and enhances the levels of service to our residents with continued focus on some of the priorities that the councils establish, including public safety, affordable housing, homelessness, traffic, economic development, and other related areas. Again, establishes a structurally balanced and sustainable fiscal plan, provides funding for and programming of other city council priorities, and continues to fund the reserve policy at the recommended levels. So, breaking down the budget, as far as the revenues go, this is kind of a pie chart that you've seen in the past, revenues do change from year to year, but this is pretty consistent with what we've shown you in the past. Sales tax, property tax, property tax in lieu of VLF, those are the largest income categories or revenue categories in the city, and then a variety of other taxes relating to franchise fees and transit occupancy tax, utility user tax, and others make up the balance. Where the funds go, so if you look at general fund only, you see it's largely driven by compensation, also operating costs, internal service funds, which includes fleet and facilities, and IT, and risk, and others, and then transfers out. It's kind of the large categories of where our general fund dollars go. And then if you break it down by function, as we've shown you in the past, Police Department is by far the largest percentage of the general fund budget, at a little over 68%. And then broken down, you can see the other departments and how they're represented here on the slide. So, again, kind of looking at the total revenues that we have outside of just the general fund, this is all funds, you can see it's where the funds are coming from. Let's see. So, this includes development impact fees, building permits, so as the economy continues to run hot and strong, there's a lot of revenues that go into those. Investment income, that's changing as interest rates are going up, so that's a benefit in addition to, obviously, there's headwinds associated with inflation, but that actually also allows some additional interest and revenue income that comes through that. Grants, the city is always very aggressive at pursuing various grants at the federal and state level as much as we can, so it gives you an idea of kind of where we have. And the city's fortunate that we do, as Renee just went through, all these community facilities districts that we have, that is, you know, approximately 16% of the total city budget is funded through those, and so we're very fortunate that we have a very robust extra financing districts that allows us to maintain, like I said, some of it's for police services, but roadways and all kinds of parks and landscaping and other things that are important services that would be significant impacts on our general fund if not for those community facilities districts that we have. So, we're fortunate to be able to have a very diversified revenue base in the city of Elk Grove. So, as far as total funds, here's how the money is spent. If you look at outside the general fund, if you look at every funding source, capital outlay is the largest one. So, our capital projects, we have a very aggressive capital program for roads and streets and parks and other things that we like to spend our funds on, that beyond that is operating, and then compensation. As, again, you saw before, the compensation was a very high percentage of general fund, it's a much lower percentage of the total budget, because a lot of the funds then go towards the capital projects. We don't have a lot of capital projects that are funded out of the general fund. Most of those funds come from designated special funds, traffic impact fees, and other specific programs that we have, or Measure A and SB1, and all kinds of different funding sources that go towards those. Looking at, again, looking at this in totality, so you can see our capital improvement program is 40%, Public Works 12%, Development Services 10%, it's pretty diversified. And Police Department, in looking at the totality of city expenditures, that percentage goes down. When you look at just the general fund, it's very high, but as a totality of all the city projects and all the city funds, it's a smaller percentage. So, big picture, looking at money coming in and money going out, you can see the green is our revenues, the blue is our expenditures, and the black is the fund balance. So, revenues in each of the five years that we project out exceeds our revenues. You will notice that in the out years, that You will notice that in the out years, that difference does close a little bit, that our expenditures are going up a little bit faster than the revenues, but we still are showing a surplus in each of the years, in that five years. And I'm going to get to in a second here, talking a little bit about potential headwinds. So this budget that we're presenting to you does not anticipate an official recession. So we know that that is a possibility, there are headwinds, obviously, high inflation, the Russian-Ukraine conflict, other things that might materialize. The Fed is trying to delicately balance and combat inflation without sending the economy into a tailspin. And so it remains to be seen whether the Fed is going to be successful in doing that. We, of course, hope they are, and it doesn't result in a widespread recession, but clearly there are risks there. And so what I'll tell you is even though we haven't anticipated or expected major revenue declines in the coming year because of our financial position and because of the reserve we have set aside and because of the work that we've done over the years, we have plans in place and we know where we can adjust should those headwinds materialize and should revenues start to decline, we can act quickly, we can come back to the city council, we can make adjustments, make recommendations for you. Our goal is to do it in a way that does not reduce or cut services or impact our employees in a negative way. We have a lot of discretionary ways and funds that we can take advantage of, that we can, again, we can respond relatively quickly in the event that materializes. So we're going to be monitoring it closely and see how cooled off the economy becomes. We're hoping that if there is a dip, it's a mild dip and we just kind of keep rolling, but certainly there are some risks there. So I'm going to get into just a few highlights. Again, these are kind of categorized by some of the city council priorities. So I'll start with economic development and really, obviously, the zoo project there on your agenda later tonight is the M O U with the zoo. As that outlines, a lot of the costs are attributed to the zoo and the work associated with the design, but there are some costs that we are going to bear, including efforts-related design of the infrastructure associated with that. Council already approved a lot of that money, about a half million dollars, when the city acquired the property there. And so that money is being rolled over into the next fiscal year, so that's in there to allow that project to continue to move forward. Project Elevate, we're in the process of making determinations and decisions on potential partner there. So there are funds involved with that project to move it forward from where we'd like to see in the picture you see that reflects kind of what that vision looks like. But we've enjoyed being in the process of evaluating some of those proposals that are coming through. Increase to our small business incentive program, facade improvement program is a program that we hope to roll out this coming fiscal year that will give property owners an opportunity to upgrade the appearance of their facilities in Old Town and other places. We're also adding a new economic development position, first one we've done in several years to be able to support the effort and all the work that's going on in that department right now. Expansion of the startup program, the job training workforce development program that council's aware of through our ARPA funds, that'll be underway this next fiscal year. Infrastructure support for our Grantline Business Park, looking forward to, it's great to see Cabota under construction right now, so looking forward to that come to fruition and also allowing that work that we're doing to incentivize and encourage other businesses to locate down there. And another new project that we've got some funds allocated for in the coming fiscal year is Wide Open Walls. Many of you are familiar with that program that's been very successful in Sacramento and they want to come to Elk Grove. So we're in the process of working with the Arts Commission to identify some potential sites and see that happen in the coming fiscal year. So some really great things happening in that department. Few things related to sustainability, this remains a priority for our organization to make sure we're leaders in our community, but also in the region. So an update to the greenhouse gas inventory is underway, a study looking at fleet electrification plan for all of the city's vehicles and colluding police vehicles and what it would take in order for us to truly be ready for that changeover. Looking at additional measures and steps that we can do to enhance our efforts related to environmentally friendly purchasing, looking at rolling out a bike share program for city staff. There's an update to our climate action plan that will be underway in the coming year. There's also building code updates that'll relate into energy efficiency that'll be adopted later in the fiscal year. And then really just a continued effort on regional cooperation and making sure that Elk Grove remains leaders in the space and is working with other agencies to bring some of these things forward. Of course, police efforts, public safety remains at the top of everybody's list here in Elk Grove. And so I'm going to go through just very high-level some of the programs and really points of emphasis in that budget. As with any of these, as I get to the end, if you have questions, I'm going to turn it over to the experts, our police chief and other department heads to answer those questions for you. But these are some of the things that really the budget addresses. So continued investment in our real-time information center, the money that's coming through the federal government, through the congressional earmark from Congressman Barra, that'll be put to good use in the coordination between our Arctic and our communication center. But there's additional software and other improvements that are coming for that facility as well that we're excited about. The P D campus improvements, drove up today, you could see some of the construction underway out in the, for some new fencing. The Studio Court project across the way is under construction as well, that'll be done in the coming fiscal year. And then we're going to turn towards additional improvements in this building and across the street at 8380. So continuing to address the growing needs of our police department. Animal services, we will offer a low-cost bay neuter program for all Grove residents. That was something that we added last year as we added a new position. So that'll be rolled up and ramped up in this coming year. Really focused on wellness programs for our staff over in the police department, it's really important, and really pleased to see them focusing on that. Expansion of cameras and license plate readers across the city. So again, another way of, you know, if you're going to, hopefully you don't commit a crime in Elk Grove, but if you do, we're going to catch you, and making sure that we have the resources to get that done. And increased community engagement. So I think we sent you pictures, maybe you've seen it, our new wonderful barbecue trailer. So I know these guys are excited to get out there in the community and have some neighborhood barbecues and really talk to our community members about what it means and how we can better serve them. So that's really, really exciting. And then just new equipment, new technology, we're always looking to invest in. So one of those things is a new laser scanner technology that's really going to improve the way we investigate major collisions and crime scenes. So just kind of a teaser or highlights of a few items that are going on in P D. Here's just some highlights of the capital projects that are in the coming fiscal year. I'm not going to go through this in any detail because as Jeff and his team are going to go through the capital improvement program here just after me in a few minutes, but there's just a few of those priorities here on this project. And just as a reminder, the C I P is a five-year plan. The first year of that plan is what goes into this budget. With that, I've invited Sean Gallagher, our Deputy Public Works Director, to come up and share with you some information about really an entirely new way of providing service in a couple of key areas, and that's street sweeping and our storm drain system. So I'm going to have Sean walk you through this. Sean?
Yes. Good evening again, Sean Gallagher, Deputy Public Works Director. And I'm here to talk about two changes to existing programs within the Operations Division. First is our in-house street sweeping, in-housing our street sweeping services. Currently, right now, we contract that out. We're proposing to add two street sweepers and operators. We are estimating that this will save the division roughly $400,000 a year by doing this conversion. It will provide equivalent services and with the opportunity to expand services and adjust as the city continues to grow. The second program we're proposing to change is our storm drain cleaning program. We're proposing four new staff and equipment for this program. It's roughly about a $500,000 savings versus contracting with these new enhanced services. It'll improve the cleaning and inspection program. And additionally, the crews will be able to take on other tasks performed by contractors as well, like our catch basin cleaning, across culvert, and storm response. So street sweeping. In February of 2020, we received a challenge to our street sweeping, whether it was prevailing wage or non-pervailing wage. Previously, we had paid non-pervailing wage. This was forwarded to the Department of Industrial Relations where we waited for a ruling. But during that time, we've started to pay prevailing wage for street sweeping, which more than doubled our costs overnight for this. In September of 2021, we received a ruling from the D I R that marked it as prevailing wage, securing these rates long-term. We are proposing to change over to city staff to perform this service. Over the first five years, we will save nearly $2.2 million in the drainage fund. We will improve our operational control and maintaining our existing level, but also become more flexible with it. The equipment we are proposing to add also has equipment on it that allows us to clean catch basins. A lot of times, street sweepers don't run during storm season. These will be able to operate during that time, providing more service, being more responsive, and getting to those hotspot areas sooner. The second area is our storm drain cleaning program. When I was hired, we weren't cleaning pipes. We were not doing anything. Over the last few years, we've started to add a little bit more, but right now, we are on a 44-year cycle to clean all the pipe in the city. That is way above industry standards. We're seeing increased street flooding, pipe failures. This last year, Sheldon North had to have an emergency repair, 175 feet, cost us roughly $300,000 to replace, and the pipe was only 30 years old. If we had gotten there earlier, we could have relined it at a much lower rate, keeping that pipe in place for a longer term. What we're proposing to do is go to a 10-year cycle. It's estimated if we contracted this, it would be about $1.2 million per year, but we want to go to in-house crew. We expect this will save us $500,000 over that contracted amount, but this will reduce our street flooding. It will, you know, reduce our trash and debris from getting into our creeks and provide a safer roadway during storm season. So finally, you know, just want to kind of highlight, you know, this is an increased service level, improved maintenance efficiencies, reduce the maintenance cost, you know, putting more money back into the drainage fund so we can address other areas that need to be looked at, give more flexibility, and help reduce future capital costs, the larger capital costs.
Great, thanks, Sean. Always like to focus a little bit on CalPERS costs, something we're proud of. And this is something that started a number of years ago, starting setting money aside, prepaying some of those obligations, those liabilities. We've made $11 million in additional payments since the 2015-16 fiscal year. Our plans combined are 87% funded compared to the PERS average of 71%. We get our new actuariales this summer, we expect that number to go up, mostly because last year's returns for PERS were really good. Now this year's, they're not so good. So it may go back down next year, but this year, I think it'll be good. And it'll still be much higher than the PERS average for other agencies. And we have another $900,000 budgeted in the coming year for those. And in the five-year forecast, we continue and expect to be able to make those payments as they're needed. Once we get to a status or a level of funding that we're really high, let's say we get to 95%, then we won't even need to do those additional payments anymore, which will reduce that and free those funds up for other purposes and services in the city. So it's really important, really great cost savings for the city. Every dollar that we invest paid in advance saves nearly a dollar in interest over the life of the program. So focus on new positions. I've mentioned a few of these already, but I'll highlight a few others. We have a total of 15 new positions that are being recommended, but eight of those are really transitions or changes from contract to city position. So there's really seven new positions, four of them in the Police Department, three of them outside the Police Department. The three outside the Police Department, there's two in the City Manager's Office, one is the Economic Development Specialist I mentioned, the other one is a new Community Event Specialist. Right now, as we've opened Old Town Plaza, we've done doing more at District 56, there's just a need, we've only had really the one event, wonderful event person, Jody, doing this for a number of years, and we're trying to get her some help to be able to continue to expand services and expand the number of events and programs we can offer in our community. So really excited about that one as well. And then also with the continued emphasis on affordable housing, addressing homelessness, we have a new position that we're recommending to be added to Sarah's team down in our Development Services Department. And then for the Police Department, we have two new Community Service Officers, Record Supervisor and a new Lieutenant. Those are all positions that were identified as part of the Staffing and Efficiency Study that you saw a couple of months ago, so it's consistent with that. And then the other ones at the bottom are all the Public Works projects. Many of those are ones that Sean just went through. Some of those, the three, the maintenance technicians, senior maintenance technicians, and the two street sweeping operators, and the two on the top, the Administrative Analyst and Administrative Assistant, are transitioned from contract staff to city staff. So that's the rundown of the new positions. And then kind of at the end here, I wanted to make sure that, I know the council's aware of this, I want to make sure the community's aware of this as well. We're looking into the future, right? What are our needs? What are we not able to fund effectively right now? What are those community priorities and how do we line that? How do we best meet those community needs? And so we've been doing some community polling, some outreach, we've had a number of meetings, 31 community meetings to date. We have many more scheduled in the coming month. We have a lot of information out on our website and through social media. We're encouraging people to visit our new website that we set up, which is elkgrovelife.com. This is a partnership with the C S D. In addition to the needs that the city has related to public safety, police services, road maintenance, traffic, C S D has fire response needs, park needs, there's a lot of needs in the community. We don't have enough resources to do all the things that our community would like us to do nor the things that we would like to do. And so we're reaching out and having community dialogue about what does that look like, what would community members like to see, and how can we accomplish that? And so this, again, we've had some discussions before, but looking forward to coming back to you, I think in July, with some results of that, some additional polling work we're planning on doing in June about the potential for a revenue measure in the fall. And so we'll be prepared to discuss that and present the results of that to you and let you know what the staff recommendation might be at that time, once we're kind of through all the community meetings, hear what the community members have to say, what the polling is showing, then we'll be prepared at that time to make some recommendations to you. So the recommendation tonight is to ask any questions, council might have any questions for staff, we're here to answer those for you, receive public comment. Again, further detail will be brought back at the June 8th meeting where the council will have an opportunity to actually adopt the budget at that meeting tonight. You cannot adopt it because it has not been publicly noticed, but just receive the information, ask questions, and kick us over to June 8th, and we'll be prepared to adopt at that point. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Berman. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. Seeing nobody signed up, I will close the public comment opportunity and ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments of staff. I'll start to my right. Nope. Councilmember Spees, yes.
I do, actually. Thank you, Mr. Berman, I appreciate it. Two things I want to talk about, first one in economic development, and then the second one in family services. So in 2015, the City Council made a very, very good decision relative to bring on Mr. Doan. We've done a lot of good things in economic development since 2015. And so it's really nice as an elected official to be out and about and have people say, hey, Elk Grove's moving in a great position, a great direction. And so my question then is, you know, what are we doing here on the next budget? I did see, of course, the presentation, but I would like to know, is there additional things that we could be doing? I'd like to try to accelerate through a downturn as opposed to do nothing, or not do nothing, but to sit still, right? So I just want to get some information from you.
Good evening. You are not on.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Soon, and council members. Appreciate the kind words, councilman. Well, our budget is increasing, our operating, the adopted operating budget for F Y 2223 is about $400,000, so we've added about $200,000 in that to increase our capacity. A large portion of that, about $150,000, goes to the project Elevate work, which I think is going to be a, this is an overused term, but a transformational project to bring that kind of placemaking to Elk Grove. So growing the operating budget will help in the near term. Doesn't always mean we'll be at that $600,000 level. Historically, we were as high as $700,000 since I've been here, so it's gone up and it's gone down. So this is a year where we need to go up to add some capacity. And then if you approve it, I think adding an economic development specialist will be probably the biggest boon to the department. There's only two of us right now, myself and Specialist Aguilar. And we have a vacant, Louis Aguilar, we have a vacant program manager position, which Ms. Brownfield, we will recruit for that in the near future. Our priority right now is adding that second specialist. They are, to use a football metaphor, they do the blocking and tackling of the department while I get to score touchdowns for you. So with that additional specialist, that'll really double our capacity and all those sort of small business support, economic metric tracking, all of the grunt work that we do that doesn't get a lot of headlines. I think that would take us to four employees, and we will fill Ms. Brown's position when appropriate. I kind of want to get the newer, the new person in and build that piece and then add a more senior person. You know, we have been at three people since 2017, so it's been about five years. I think we do a lot with a little, but we can do a whole lot more with a little more. And I think we'll be fine for the next several years at that level. You know, if we enter a recession, I think that's when economic development is maybe more valuable. And I think we can reevaluate our budget priorities and staffing if and when that happens, so.
Awesome. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. And then the second question I had is related to in 2021, I got this right, the violent crime increased due mostly to aggravated assault. And that's, I think I have a right when we say that that's attributed mostly to domestic violence, right?
Yes, sir.
So my question then is... So my question then is, what, what priorities are we put? I, I notice, of course, the, you know, the, the funding for Weave. Are there additional projects and things that we can do to, while it's a societal problem that is very, very difficult to solve, are there efforts that we can put towards trying to reduce that domestic abuse?
Well, we have actually the recommendation for the staffing study for the next two years. Recommended two positions that we would look at, which would also be advocates. We looked at them internally and externally. We have to maintain our relationship with Weave for reporting purposes and making sure that we are meeting all the standards that they have set as well. But for us, the staffing study kind of identified those areas where we could be better or get better in our approach with, you know, providing services to the victims in our community of domestic violence.
Okay, all right. Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume?
No questions per se, it's just it's a little unnerving, you know, to look back that within a little over ten years, we're almost doubling our general fund budget. And I realize a function of that is that the city itself has grown in population, obviously, and so there are more people to serve. But also, as we saw in, particularly in the presentation from Sean, is, is relative to that, that changeover from contract staff to in-house staff, which was all set in motion way back when from the Sinclair report that said, you know, this is a natural progression of a city. However, with just that one street sweeping piece, to see the cost double, you know, to, to bring it in-house, it, it, I, I just want to caution us that as, as the city continues to grow and as employees are brought on in-house, that we, can you, we, we keep that mindset of nimbleness, eagerness, and responsiveness, and that we don't become just another bureaucratic entity that has a lot of staff.
Let me just respond to that really quick. And I, I share your concerns. We want to make sure, every time we've decided to add staff in replacement of contractors, it's been to save money. And the street sweeping is, is no exception. I think what, what Sean relayed is that by switching to in-house street sweeping is going to save that amount of money. Going from the old model, the old, the old contract pricing that we had, and then because the Department of Justice and Relations required us to pay more, that's the increase of up to $900,000 or whatever that, that was. And so by switching to in-house, now we can start to bring those numbers back down, not to maybe the level we were at before, but we're never going to go back to that level because DIR has spoken, and that's, that's the way it is. So that's really the reason why we're bringing that item forward to you is because we don't want to continue to spend that high of an amount. So in order to bring it down, really the way to do that is to bring that in-house.
I'd also like to add just one or two bit to it. So those positions for street sweeping and for the maintenance technicians are actually funded by the, the drainage, the drainage fund, not the general fund. So it will not have an impact on the, the doubling of the general fund since there's funding completely in a different. And the drainage fund itself is in, is a pretty healthy, healthy state at this, at this point, so.
Any additional questions? Vice Mayor Soon?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to start off by thanking Jason and Shay for, for putting this, this report together. And, and I'm very thankful to see Mr. Gallagher's report too about taking care of what we have as, as we continue to grow, you know, putting in new infrastructure. All the shiny objects are great, but taking care of what we have is critically important. So I'm, I'm pleased to see a significant investment going towards that. And of course, in a cost-conscious way, as, as Mr. Berman articulated. I wanted to just quickly ask for, if it isn't done already. We, we talked about the, the police budget, and there's several things in there that aren't intuitive under the police budget in the, in the general fund part with, you know, we, the contract with Weave, our homeless navigators. And I'd just like to see if, maybe try to highlight that to, to folks as we communicate our, our budget so that they know animal shelter, you know, that they know all these things that the community, I know, values is all part of the police budget. So if we could just do, maybe be a little more explicit in that, that'd be, be great. Thank you.
Thank you, excellent presentation. And in regards to coming in-house, I definitely am very much in support. For me, in-house provides more oversight and accountability. And so for, you know, and the cost savings are the bonus, not the driving factor. But it's definitely a great driving factor as well. In terms of just the overall presentation, I was just really pleased to see that our five-year forecast looks great. For public safety, I do agree with, with Vice Mayor Soon to really highlight and showcase those proactive efforts that we are taking because there is sort of that restlessness on part, in the part of the community of what all, you know, what more can we be doing? I've, you know, hosted a number of HOA meetings. I've hosted coffees, I've attended stakeholder meetings. Today, I was with over a hundred realtors, realtors at Keller Williams here in Elk Grove, just down the street. And so I know that the community, the public safety component, people are very much interested. Our residents are very much interested. I was very pleased to see all of the community outreach efforts and building that relationship. And that's where I know that we, as a city, I'm so proud of the work that we do and that partnership with our police department and the partnership that police department creates with our community. Those connections are just so critical. But we want to make sure that we, as city council, are doing all that we can to be supportive and making sure that, you know, some of the, not, they're not really complaints, but things that people bring up. We could, we would love to see more law enforcement. We would love to see more enforcement in, in the rural area. I hosted a meeting out there, and that was one of the things that keeps coming up, is just having more visible officers out in some of the communities, particularly out there for patrol enforcement in some of those communities where we, you know, if we're short-staffed, then we need to look at that. And, and I, and I've done a number of ride-alongs. I know that there's a, there's tremendous pride. And Chief Davis, you're doing a remarkable job. I've actually had a great meeting just very recently and just hearing wonderful things about your leadership. So the extent that we can be supportive in making sure that we are providing the resources necessary. We, we've outlined some great work here. But I do know from the community's perspective, they would love to see more of our officers in some, some pockets of Elk Grove where we, we don't have as much of a presence or, you know, enhanced presence. The sustainability efforts that were highlighted, I'm attending the U.S. Conference of Mayors in a couple of weeks, and there are definitely a lot of best practices that I'll bring back and things for us to look at is just, you know, additional lenses so we're not having to reinvent the wheel. Or as we're doing our updates to our climate action plan, what are some of the leading innovative cities throughout the country doing as well? So I'll be able to share that with you. Love seeing the economic development, that's one of my favorite areas, Mr. Doan, and all of the great work because today, again, in, in meeting with, with Keller Williams, that was something that we got, you know, I got to boast about, was all of the great prosperity in the city and that catchphrase of Elk Grove being open for business. They're seeing, obviously, an uptake in, in their business because people want to live here. And so all of the great things that are taking place there, I applaud everyone that is a part of that. Let's see, anything else that I've? So I, there is uncertainty, and then you've mentioned it, Mr. Berman, in the, in your presentation, from the community and just what's happening in the world with international conflicts, the rising cost of fuel. Those are things that people are paying attention to, interest rates, pending inflation, whatever. So, you know, all of those various things is creating a lot of uncertainty with the general population, and it was definitely expressed with the stakeholder group of a hundred plus. They do want to participate as one of your community outreach efforts. You have a hundred built-in people that are from all over Elk Grove. So I'm sure you, the Keller Williams just down the street, I'll, I'll give you the address. But they're very much interested in being part of the collaborative efforts and community engagement. As one additional stakeholder group, as you share different ideas and policy issues, they definitely want to be included and be a part of that. Excellent, excellent report, thank you so much. I, it's just really great to see the city in such a, in a positive financial situation. So thank you, everyone, for your respective roles to keeping our city strong financially. With that, this is just receiving information. We will move on to our next item, and that is a 9.3, receive an overview report of the proposed fiscal years 2022 through 2027 capital improvement program and provide direction as appropriate. Welcome, Ms. Parsons.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm Kristin Parsons, your Deputy Public Works Director for Engineering. I'm here tonight to present the proposed draft fiscal year 2022 to 2027 capital improvement program. Before I go into the proposed program, I'd like to talk about a few of the accomplishments that we have completed this past year. We had a goal to do, to award twenty-four projects for construction. We are on target to award as many as twenty-six, maybe even a couple more than that, by the end of June. We have delivered a number of high-priority projects we've completed. I'll go through very quickly several of these. Railroad Street Improvements Project, most of you are very familiar with this project in the Old Town area. Along with that project, which was completed in July of last year, we completed the Old Town Plaza Phases Two and Three projects. This added the pavilion, hardscape, and landscape to the area. And Railroad Street extended roadway improvements, bicycle pedestrian improvements, and utilities to the channel crossing near the end of Railroad Street. Oasis Park was completed in the summer of 2021. This was the ninety-ninth park completed in Elk Grove. And in the fall of 2021, Sing and Cora Park, our one-hundredth park, was completed. In November, we opened Camera Road from Bruceville Road to Lent Ranch Parkway. That was a pretty significant project that was completed in November, providing the segment A2 for the Southeast Connector Project. In March, Grantline Road Widening Project Phase Two, which was from Waterman Road to Bradshaw Road, was fully operational. We widened this from two lanes to four lanes and added signal improvements and realigned the intersection at Bradshaw Road. In November, we also opened the Preserve at District 56. In September of 2021, we completed our annual slurry seal and resurfacing project. We have a number of high-priority projects that will be coming to you soon. In the fall of this year, we will have our next annual slurry seal and resurfacing project completed. We've been under construction of a solar array out at District 56, and that's anticipated to be complete this summer, fully operational. The solar arrays are there, we're working on the final electrical work. You may remember a few years ago, we completed roadway improvements. We reconstructed Waterman Road from Bond to Sheldon Road. And we have a similar project now called the Arterial Roads Rehabilitation and Bicycle Lane Improvements Project that will reconstruct Waterman Road from Bond Road to Elk Grove Boulevard and then picking it up again at Main Line down to Grantline Road. There is also a small segment on Elk Grove Florin Road from Elk Grove Boulevard South to Valley Oak Lane. The final product of that project in the rural areas will look very similar to the Waterman Road Rehabilitation Project between Bond and Sheldon. We have a number of facilities projects coming in this next year. Studio Court remodel and the PD Campus Improvements Project that Mr. Berman referenced earlier this evening, that you see happening right around here. We're also doing tenant improvements out at 10-190 Iron Rock Way. And we're working on tenant improvements at the three buildings located on this campus right here, 8380, 8401 Laguna Palms Way. There will be a variety of tenant improvements in those three buildings that we're working on design for. Last year, we received a large H-SIP grant along with two other grants. We combined projects together to create the Citywide Traffic Signal Enhancements and Congestion Relief Project. This will provide some great congestion relief throughout the city, and we are working on releasing the RFP for consultant selection for that project. We anticipate having that complete in 2024. Okay, so here we are with the Five-Year CIP. The Five-Year CIP reflects the city's capital project priorities. So the first year, it's a five-year plan. The first year is part of the city's annual budget. The remaining years, years two through five, are a forecast of what we anticipate spending. This is updated on an annual basis. The process we follow is to identify needs. We look for potential projects. We compare that to funding availability. We do a projection of revenue. We work very closely with finance staff. We look at what funds are restricted versus discretionary funding sources. And finally, we compare that to available staff resources to make sure we can implement the plan that we're proposing. The CIP capital program is broken into five different programs. The first is the Alternative Transportation Modes, which has your bike, ped, and transit projects. The second is Community Enhancements. That's mainly landscaping and lighting projects and plazas and parks, things that would enhance our community. Drainage is basically what it sounds like, flood control and stormwater quality and the conveyance of stormwater. Our facilities projects, that can include new facilities, new buildings that we construct, the animal shelter, District 56 Community Center, things like that. Tenant improvement projects to our facilities, like I recently referenced, and repair and maintenance projects. And lastly, the fifth program, and our largest, is transportation. This includes pavement resurfacing, traffic control, as lo, as well as your traditional transportation projects. We also program studies on minor pub, public works projects that are under $250,000. So if a project is $250,000 or more in cost, then it becomes part of the overall CIP. Things that are less than $250,000 get programmed as a minor project or study. So they won't show, show up in the active projects. This is an overview, the pie chart gives you an idea of the funding breakdown for the proposed five-year CIP. We're programming $217 million in program funds. Two and a half million dollars is in discretionary funds, and $54 million is unfunded. That would be things like anticipated grants that we expect to receive or are trying to obtain. That leaves 131.5 million in restricted funds, as you can see here. This breakdown covers fifty-one projects in the CIP. That has twelve new projects and studies that we've added this year. Twenty-four active prior year projects that were in the CIP last year had funding for last year. That funding may have been adjusted this year. And fifteen existing projects that were in years two through five. Breaking it down by each program, you can see the amount of unfunded versus proposed funding in the CIP. Alternative Transportation Modes has almost $14 million funded. Community Enhancements, a little over $14 million. Drainage, $15 million. Facilities, a little over $12 million. And Transportation, our largest program, at $107 million. The breakdown of projects within that, we have fourteen projects in the Alternative Transportation Modes, eight projects programmed in Community Enhancements, four in Drainage, eight in Facilities, and seventeen in Transportation. So these are some of the new projects that we've added to the CIP with this proposed plan. Our annual cur- Our annual curb ramp project, which we add on an annual basis. Sidewalk infill improvements, this has a variety of locations in it. Buffet Class II Bike Lanes on Elk Grove Boulevard. An extension of the Franklin Boulevard Cycle Track between Elk Grove Boulevard to Laguna Boulevard. Bike and pedestrian crossing improvements, this again has a variety of locations in it. Citywide Bike Lane Improvements for East-West Arterial Roads. Accessibility upgrades at city facilities. Some additional improvements, a variety of improvements at District 56. Our annual pavement slurry seal and resurfacing project. And Lots Promenade Parkway. I want to mention with Lots Promenade Parkway, this was already programmed in the CIP, but it was broken down into a variety of segments. We've taken a closer look at that, knowing where we are today, and we've removed or deactivated some of the prior projects that were in there and added this new project to clean things up. That one's more of a housekeeping. And then we have two new minor projects or studies. Trail Sign and Way Finding Project and doing, looking at a study on the Old Fish Hatchery site to restore that parcel. So potential changes that might be coming to the document that you have under review. We were notified that there were about another $5,000 in CDBG funds that became available for capital project that will be added to our 2023 Citywide Curb Ramp Project. When those are finally available to be moved into the project, we will add that. I don't know if that will happen before it's adopted or not. Old Town Street Area Streetscape Phase Two. We submitted this to four different requests for Congressional earmark funds, and we know that it's moved forward for at least two of them. Similarly, the Laguna Creek Interregional Trail Crossing at State Route 99. We also submitted, those were the two number-one and number-two priority projects we submitted for earmark funding. We're also submitting the Laguna Creek Interregional Trail overcrossing at State Route 99 for the Cycle Six ATP Funding Round. We're currently working on that grant application. So in summary, we will continue to meet or exceed our annual goals and project delivery and grants. That will be our primary focus and delivery of those key projects. So we've listed a number of key projects here that are high priority projects or extremely important to continued advancement of our program. I won't read them all. I'll just give you a moment to look at them. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions or receive feedback that you may have. This is an informational item, and at the next City Council meeting, finance will be bringing back the budget for adoption, and the CIP will be included in there.
All right, excellent. Thank you for that amazing presentation. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. Seeing nobody signed up, I will close the public comment opportunity and turn to my council colleagues for any additional questions. I'll start to my right. Councilmember Wen?
No, no questions, but just being on the council for the last five years and just being able to discuss some of these projects and then voting on it and then seeing it come through, and as you were giving the presentation, I'm just having these flashbacks and the aerial views of them. It was just so beautiful to see it all come together. And when you had said there was 26 projects we've done, I couldn't think of the 26 projects. And as you were going through them, it was just nice to see it. So thank you for the presentation.
Councilmembers, please.
So I know it's like choosing one of your favorite pets, but I'm going to ask you this one. So I mean, when I'm out talking to residents around Elk Grove, right, can you, can you give me like the one project that you think will have the greatest effect on the city, the residents, something that they should be, most people should be excited about? Again, it's like choosing amongst your favorite pets, but you know, give it a shot.
You're talking about a coming project or one we just completed?
No, one that's coming.
One of each.
Or one of each, whatever.
Favorite pet, I think that's the next item there. Councilmembers, please. Oh, sorry.
We have so many amazing projects. Can I pick two?
Yeah.
Okay.
So our congestion relief project, our large $12.2 million grant-funded project for our traffic division is going to provide great relief for us throughout the city. And I know that's a high priority of our community. But over the last couple of years, we've come to realize how important quality of life is and our active transportation improvements. And making the connection across Highway 99 along the Laguna Creek Interregional Trail System is huge. That is an extremely large barrier we need to overcome. So being able to get the grant funding to complete that project is one of my top priorities.
Okay. And that's hopefully, hopefully coming in 2023 or?
I believe that one is 2020, well, fully constructed is probably 2025. I'd have to go back and look.
Right. You said two.
She said two.
So we are...
They were tied together?
So the congestion relief project.
This is why Kevin only has one pet, is it's tough to pick a favorite one.
I didn't mean to confuse you, I'm sorry.
Kristin, if you don't mind.
I missed the second one.
I want to jump in here for Councilmember Species Question. So we just completed a cycle of delivering several large projects, including District 56, Camera Road, Grantline Road, New Growth Area Roads. So we've delivered a ton of transportation projects that are transformational for this community recently, and we're just embarking now on a new cycle of projects. So Camera Road connecting from I-5 to Bruceville Road, the interregional trail connection that she just mentioned, our ITS project, the Traffic Congestion Relief Project, which will be completed in 2024. So there's not really a project coming up in 2023 per se, but there are several on the horizon that are now programmed in the CIP that we're working on the design development for that are coming. And I think people should be excited about those projects. You know, White Lock Interchange is another one. That's way far out there, but we're still working on those projects, and we continue to develop them. So, you know, we have a lot of exciting things going on with maintenance as well, but as far as capital projects go, we're going to be doing what we do on an annual basis, slurry seal, paving roads, curb ramps. You know, we have a lot of gap closures coming up. People, you know, don't realize how important that is until they come across a sidewalk that doesn't exist, and now they're walking in the road. So that project probably is pretty exciting as well. But for the most part, those large projects, they're coming, but they're probably, give us a couple of years to get those designed, funded, and then we'll deliver upon them.
I've got a place where there's a gap. I'll let you know it. Hopefully, you've already got it decided. But I drive by it frequently, and I look at it, and I've seen, you know, a father walk with his child and have to kind of dodge around, and so I will send you that.
Change order number one.
I'm sure you already have it in there. I'm sure you do. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hume?
Yeah, I want to echo some of the things that my colleague, Councilmember Wen, said just as far as, that was a big factor back when I decided not to seek reelection here is because you never get to a point where you can check a box and say you're done. But seeing a lot of these very cool projects go from these wild-eyed ideas into the physical manifestation in the community and really the, what they represent for the quality of life and for the fabric of the community, it's very impressive. As our Public Works Director just mentioned, there were a lot of big projects that have come on board in the last couple of years. And I know that I drive Camera Road, even if I'm not necessarily, if it's not the fastest route, just because I love driving that road now. It's like, it feels so good, this has been done. And so I just want to commend all of you. But I do have a question, and that is, in your minor future projects, you listed the Old Fish Hatchery site, and it was WCE 031, I believe. And I tried to find it, and it jumps from WCE 020 to WCE 035. And so can you describe for me, just for my own edification, and that word's for Doug Scott, by the way, if Doug's listening, describe for my own edification what that project will entail?
Sure. That can be found in the Minor Project section if you flip to that tab when you're looking at your hard copy.
I thought I went there. So it was 297, should have been the beginning of, beginning of Minor Project. Minor Public Works Projects and Studies by Program?
Okay, I will have to look at it then. Yes. I'll look into it and make sure that we have it listed in the correct location. But that project will study the site and look at what issues we have in being able to restore the habitat there. So it's, it's a very preliminary study to determine what would need to be done to restore the parcel and what it should be used for, what it should look like.
Okay, so the, the project that's funded in this five-year plan is just the study to look at restoring it back to a native habitat?
Yes.
Okay. And then my last question is, back to your favorite pet question, the ITS program, obviously that's a big thing that we get asked all the time, is why don't you guys have the lights synchronized? How come it takes me forever to get across town? Why do I have a red light? And I know we've talked about this in the past, that ITS can only do so much, because soon as someone hits that pedestrian cross button, it throws off all the cycles, all the timing. And so give me your 30-second elevator speech on what this project is going to do that's going to have such a significant impact.
There will be a number of upgrades to equipment that will allow us to allow our, our traffic system to recognize pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicles, and be able to react to changing, to the need for changes within the system. So we'll be able to react more quickly on the fly.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to commend you for all your work, and this report is fantastic. As, you know, as you know, I'm very passionate about infrastructure, but for the reasons you talked about, which was maintaining or enhancing our quality of life here. And as we continue to grow, what we talked about in the previous item, you know, having the infrastructure to support that growth is critically important. And so to continue to see these projects come forward and make progress is very exciting to me. I do want to highlight, you know, you, you mentioned the budget and how you have that gap and how we're, we're going to try to close that $51 million gap with grant funds, which we may or may not get. And so these, you know, people see these projects, and we see them come to fruition, but you're only able to do, I mean, it's, it's revenue constrained, your plan, and so you're only able to do so much with the resources that you have. And there is a significant amount that we rely upon with grant funding. And so that's, it's just something that, you know, as people, we hear from residents about the ITS project, and we've been talking about for several years, but we've been relying on grants to get this thing done. So slowly but surely, we will get it done, but I hope the public can be patient with us as, you know, we're limited in our source of funds. And then lastly, in terms of commending, I remember seeing, you guys were awarded AACE recently, were you not? And maybe Jeff or Kristin, if you could, you know, maybe give the specifics for that, because I think the world should know, or at least our city should know, how great a work you guys are doing, how it's being recognized by the American Society of Civil Engineers.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sun. Yes, last Friday, we received two awards from the American Society of Civil Engineers. One was for the Preserve, and the other was for the Old Town Plaza Railroad Street Projects. So two fantastic projects our community is enjoying on a daily basis.
Absolutely, yeah, and well deserved. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent report. These are quality of life projects, and so I know our community is paying attention. I can tell you the projects that I hear about most, so it's not a pet project per se, but what I'm hearing feedback from residents in these various stakeholder meetings that they have really loved and continue to, obviously, is the Old Town Plaza. I hear about that all the time. And then the Preserve. Those are the two, I mean, I hear about others, but those two are top of mind, including today, when I, when I was speaking before 100 or so residents from our, from here. So, you know, just great work, looking forward to seeing what, what the future holds, and definitely kudos to the council from previous years. You get to see the fruition of all of that, you know, projects you've supported over the years and seeing it come to fruition. That definitely has to be rewarding. So thank you, everybody, for moving our city forward, and more to come. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will move on to our next item, item 9.4. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Sacramento Zoological Society regarding master planning and environmental review for a zoo in Elk Grove.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Christopher Jordan, joined this evening by Jason Jacobs and Elizabeth Staller from Sacramento Zoological Society. I know they'll want to get up in a moment and say a few things, but do want to recognize them here. You'll recall back in March, you received the feasibility study and the economic and revenue impact analysis for the potential zoo project. And the conclusion of that item, you directed staff to move forward with the society in drafting guidance or memorandum of understanding that would address how the next steps would play out. So we're back here this evening with that document for your consideration. So what the MOU does, or memorandum of understanding, it outlines the activities, responsibilities, and outcomes of the next phase of work. It's a series of steps that are shown in diagram form up on the screen, but essentially, they lay out what we will be doing over about the next 18 to 24 months. Essentially, in big, broad terms, this is creating a master plan for the site, what specifically is going to be included. We will go through and ultimately create a formal financing plan, which will come back before this body for final approval. And as part of all of this, complete the environmental review process and do an environmental impact report for the project. The MOU outlines the key responsibilities of both the city and the zoological society. On the city front, we will be leading up with our partners at ACS, the public engagement effort. We'll continue our work on the infrastructure master planning, what the roadways and the sewer and water connections need to look like. We will be completing that environmental review and ultimately packaging everything up for your consideration as we would any other entitlement or land use approval process. That will go through the Planning Commission and ultimately be decided by this body. On the society's side, they will be leading the master planning effort. They are retaining the services of a landscape architecture firm that specializes in zoological projects. Mr. Jacobs may speak about that when he gets up in a moment. That team will also be working on the cost estimates for the facility. We're looking at completing two rounds of cost estimating update. You saw very preliminary numbers through the feasibility analysis two months ago. We will have updated cost estimates at both the conceptual and what we refer to as the schematic stages, to really make sure that what we're designing is aligning with what our expectations have been throughout the entire process. In terms of those plans, I mentioned the master plan, that'll be more at the conceptual level, and then what we refer to as schematic plans. These are more detailed levels that gets into the infrastructure demands, how much water, how much sewer capacity do we need at the site, what the electrical loads are, more of the details about plans. Essentially, think of them like somewhere between 15 and 30% of what the construction drawings are going to look like. So we really start to get into the nitty-gritty details so that those cost estimates really get refined. And then again, we'll have that plan of finance, so laying out what the third-party opportunities look like in terms of the fundraising and partnership objectives, and what the city's definitive role would be in the construction process. I do want to highlight very briefly the public engagement. We're continuing to work on this. We're very excited. We have new staff on board. If you've not met Crystal, she is fabulous and very energetic and excited about the project. She was here earlier. I don't know if she left, unfortunately, had to go take care of the kids. So she will, we're working right now on putting together what that engagement plan will look like. We're going to want to be sitting down with the architectural team and integrating it with that design process. This will kick off in the next few weeks as that work gets underway. So we don't have exact details to share tonight, but we are encouraging everybody to sign up for the email notifications on the website so you know when those events and activities. We're anticipating both in-person and digital events as opportunities for engagement. We're looking at ways we can engage not just with families, but also the youth in the community and a variety of other folks in what this could end up looking like, feeling like, and what those experiences potentially are. So again, please go to the website and make sure you've signed up for those. So in conclusion, the action we're requesting from you this evening is authorizing, again, the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding. If you have questions or concerns, if we need to be looking at modifications, the alternative would be to extend the existing exclusive negotiation agreement for another 30, at least 30 days, so we could bring that back to you. That concludes staff's presentation. Available to answer questions.
All right. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anybody signed up to speak, so I will close the public comment opportunity. Would Liz or Jason like to speak at all before we go into our own deliberations, if you will? Welcome.
I, I walk very fast.
I was trying to give him a moment.
Well, it's, it's great to see you all again and be in front of you. I can tell you that on the zoo's side, contingent upon your acceptance of the MOU, we have selected, with your staff's assistance, SHR Studios based out of Seattle, and they specialize in designing zoos. They have extensive work at the zoos in Fresno, Houston, and zoos throughout Australia and New Zealand. New Zealand. And it's not just designing, uh, a zoological park, but designing a sustainable campus with biohabitats, using biofiltration systems, and really looking at our precious resource of water, and making sure this is a, this is a design that fits for this piece of property. And, uh, we look forward to engaging the entire community about this. I keep saying, you know, we want to hear from the children of your community, and see what they want to learn about and what they want to experience at a zoo. So, um, we're looking forward to it. There's a lot of changes going on at the zoo. We are operating the zoo on the assumption that we will be opening a new zoo, because it takes years to get the animals where we need them. We just got some Galapagos tortoises in. Next year, the first white rhinoceros will arrive, because we have to quarantine these animals and get them set up. And so, it's presumptuous on our part, but we have to move with the best foot forward. And on that note, I'm gonna hand it over to our board president.
I don't know if I'm presumptuous, but thank you. So, I'll take it. Again, it's wonderful to see you all and to be here. It feels like a blink. We were here last time talking about, we'll be back with the M O U, you know, very soon, and here we are. I think that's a testament to not only our, our commitment to this project, but also, honestly, the incredible caliber of the staff that you've put in contact with us to make this partnership happen. And, and I, I'm not surprised you win awards. It's been exceptionally nice to work with them. And, and I think what you see in front of you, in terms of the M O U, is the culmination of not only a lot of expertise, but also a, a, a quite good partnership in terms of working out shared responsibilities and making sure that we're doing what we need to get done between now and the end of the environmental review process, right? So that the information the community needs, but that also the council needs, is available. And so, I think we're very confident and also proud of that work, getting this here quickly, but also getting it here right. And, and the only other thing I'll say is, I, I think we are very excited on the part of the society, because this is really the next step that allows us to open up a lot of other things that we're raring to do, not just with respect to the animal collection management, but also in terms of having a more formal opportunity to start reaching out to potential partners, start developing that fundraising campaign, all of the things that have been, you know, a little fuzzy up until now, that we can really start digging into as part of our, uh, participation in this process, to potentially bring a new zoo here. Uh, I have to say, after listening for the last hour, to all these incredible, you know, looking at something five years ago, six years ago, it probably seemed like, well, that seems like forever from now, and looking at the timeline for this project, I think it's exciting, and it's such an incredible opportunity, that we may be having those same conversations about a zoo in five years. And so, thank you for giving us that chance to be here to do that with you tonight. And other than that, uh, we're happy to answer any questions you may have, but we're just really happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, I will turn it over to my colleagues for asking any additional questions or providing comments. I'll start to my left, Councilmember Hume. Vice Mayor Sun.
Just excited to keep this endeavor going, so, thank you.
Councilmember Spees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It, it always seems that whenever we have these meetings and we, we approve something, and in the news the next day, it's, Elk Grove's getting a zoo! I think it's important for people to know that this is a thoughtful, collaborative process that we are going through to make sure that this works out, uh, in the interest of, of Elk Grove, and of course, um, the animals. So, it's a positive direction. I'm happy to see we're moving in this direction, but, you know, folks, this is, this is a memorandum of understanding to continue the conversation and to continue to move, hopefully, in a positive direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen.
I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Spees. I get asked all the time, are we getting a zoo? And it's nice to finally be able to say, we're finally in the discussion to go through the details of it, because we just weren't sure what was gonna happen. And so, I, I want to thank, um, Mr. Bierman and, and the team for moving this and getting us here. Um, but I also want to recognize, um, Darryl Doan for, um, picking up that phone and doing that, that cold call, you know? Um, and asking the question to see if the zoo ever would like to move out here. I'm, I'm wondering if you could do the same with Disneyland. You never know, right? You never know. Thank you.
No Disneyland. Although Angela Spees might say otherwise.
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, move to adopt the resolution.
Wait, I'm not done yet.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hume. It's a family affair up here. We can do that. Well, first and foremost, thank you to our staff for getting us to this, um, place, and to Liz and Jason for your continued support and partnership. Um, yes, we have a long way to go, but these are those critical first series of steps as part of this journey. The journey doesn't begin without those critical steps. And so, um, we're not there yet, obviously, but this M O U allows the work to continue. And it allows you, more importantly, with the Sacramento Zoological Society, to, um, to continue your work, or actually, in this case, to begin the work with your capital campaign, to start doing some of that fundraising, um, that is necessary, and then, uh, bringing a white rhino to the zoo, and, um, acclimating the rhino to the, the climate of Sacramento, which, uh, if, if it's, if he or she is coming from Fresno, um, the rhino will be very well accustomed to this, to this heat. Um, this is an exciting time for the city, and it's an exciting time, I know, for my colleagues. And, but that, you know, that public engagement is, is very important, particularly for a project of this size and caliber. And so, um, you know, a very transparent and inclusive process, and that is some of, you know, what we've, what we pledge to our community. And we definitely encourage everyone to sign up for those updates, so as information is made available to us, we can share that with all of you. This is a partnership, not only a partnership with the zoo, but a partnership with our community. So, um, I'm just very excited that we are here in these, uh, critical, um, series of steps along the way. So, just, uh, thank you again to Liz and Jason for coming here and joining us this evening, and again, um, to the staff. Mr. Doan, CJ, Jason, everyone that's been involved. Um, this is, this is a team effort, so thank you. Now, I will look for a motion.
I'll move to adopt the resolution.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. All right. Next up on our agenda, item 9.5, receive information and consider a resolution adopting an amended City of Elk Grove flag policy to include the pro- the Progress Pride flag in the list of flags approved to be flown in the city-owned property. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh, Kristin Lawrence, your Public Affairs Manager, uh, I'm presenting this item tonight with, uh, my other role in mind, which is one of the staff liaisons to the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Jace Huggins, one of our commissioners, will be joining me in this presentation tonight. We also have our Chair, Jessica Carter, in the audience, and also one of our, uh, new commissioners, Delia Baldwin. Uh, in September 2019, the city council adopted a city flag policy that guided, uh, what flags could be flown on city-owned property. The currently-approved flags include the federal, state, and city flags, as well as a number of military branch flags and the P O W flag that fly at our District Fifty-Six Veterans Grove, uh, space. At their April meeting, the Diversity and Inclusion Commission asked for the city council to consider, uh, an amendment to the city flag policy to display the Progress Pride flag at City Hall during the month of June, which is Pride Month. What we're proposing tonight is an installation in front of the 8401 Laguna Palms Way Building in place of the city flag from June 1st to June 30th. Uh, the council has a history of approving annual proclamations recognizing Pride Month that dates back to 2019. Uh, the change corresponds with similar actions that have taken place at the federal, state, and even local level, um, including Kasuna C S D, which approved such a change in 2021. Uh, this change does not make the city's flag polls a public forum. Um, the city council has the opportunity and discretion to review its flag policy from time to time, and approve changes that reflect the mission, vision, and values of the city. And, um, the change is supported by our city's appointed Diversity and Inclusion Commission, and the city's internal Diversity Equity and Inclusion Team. There's no significant fiscal impact on this request, and those costs can be absorbed through the existing budget. What we're asking for tonight is for you to consider approving a resolution adopting an amended City of Elk Grove flag policy that includes the Progress Pride flag in the list of flags approved to be flown on city-owned property. And I'll defer now to Jace Huggins, our commissioner.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, councilmembers, Vice Mayor and Mayor. First, I want to thank city staff for putting together a presentation and bringing this to you, and I also wanted to thank my fellow commission members, uh, for supporting, um, this agenda item. When I spoke to you about my desire to become a commissioner, I shared with you that I am a trans queer identified person. What I don't think I shared with you is that my parents, Suzanne and Carol, who I called Mom and Aunt Carol, were also part of the LGBTQIA+ community. A distinct memory I have growing up is of our guest room. We actually called it Aunt Carol's Bedroom, and it always looked just barely lived in. There were clothes in the drawers, some in the closet, and the bed was never quite perfectly made. It was enough to convince you that somebody used that room every day. As I grew up, I can't count the number of friends who believed I was being raised by my mom and her sister. I also can't count the number of times I was teased, bullied, or ridiculed when kids started to try and figure out what was actually going on at my house. So, what does this have to do with the city's flag policy? In my opinion, it has everything to do with it. I wonder how my parents would have felt living in a city that flew the Pride flag unabashedly every June? A city that said in actions, "We see you, we want you here, and we're proud of you." And I want to raise my kids in that city, so that their friends never have to live in a house with one extra room. In 2019, my employer, the City of Sacramento, began pri- flying the Pride flag every June, and this year, they will be raising the Progress Pride flag on June 1st. That resolution was passed in 2019, when the state of California chose to fly the Pride flag at the Capitol in direct response to the U.S. administration's decision to ban the flying of Pride flags at all U.S. embassies. I can tell you that from the pers- perspective of a staff member, the amount of support and representation that I felt the first time I saw the rainbow flag over City Hall was indescribable. Each year, we expand the flag-raising event, and each year, more LGBTQIA+ employees and allies celebrate inclusion, acceptance, and authenticity, something that I was never really sure, growing up, would be possible. My hope for Elk Grove, for all cities, counties, and our country, is to one day exist in a time where parents of trans kids can make supportive decisions without fear of prosecution, where laws like Don't Say Gay or the Youth Protection Act are distant memories of an overly decisive and judgmental era. To get there, it will take thousands upon thousands of intentional, mindful moments, millions of decisions and actions that culminate to an act of real change, not box-checking. Intentional moments, much like the one we share tonight. Moments when five people can nudge the ark that much closer to acceptance and inclusion. I would say Gandhi's quote, "Be the change you wish to see in the world," might be fitting right now, but I'd actually like to close with Brene Brown. Brene tells us, "We can choose courage, or we can choose comfort, but we can't have both at the same time." So, tonight, I ask you, for our city and for our community, to each choose courage. Thank you.
All right. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. We have one guest speaker, Michael Vargas.
Great. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Vargas. Uh, I, my husband and I are residents of Elk Grove, District 3. When we moved to Elk Grove, I made a point of saying, "My husband and I," whenever possible. Uh, I introduced myself that way, because finding a welcoming community is extremely important to LGBTQ people. LGBTQ people in this country still face a number of problems when trying to fit, when trying to find a safe place to live. Housing discrimination still keeps us out of certain neighborhoods. Bullying and anti-LGBTQ school policies affect where we can, we, where we feel comfortable sending our kids, even in the country's best school systems. And fear of social ostracism and isolation can make us wary of moving into unfamiliar neighborhoods outside the safety of established gaborhoods, uh, like Land Park and the Fab 40s. To our great joy, our neighbors, and indeed, everyone we've met throughout the community, have been absolutely wonderful and welcoming to us. And this acceptance has encouraged us to be active and excited contributors to our communities. I am delighted to be a member of the Laguna Sunrise Rotary, uh, and my husband, uh, helps manage community service projects for Elk Grove Subaru. Though I think our neighbors really like us around, because the first thing we did after moving in was to repaint our house. I can tell you right now, sun-bleached salmon is really not an appealing color. Um, and that's what our, the previous owner had decided to do, so. But raising the rainbow flag is an important way that this community can advertise that we are a safe and welcoming place for LGBTQ people. And in my experience, Elk Grove is very much a place where LGBTQ people should, should believe and should feel that they can thrive. Some think that raising the rainbow flag is about politics, but really, it's just a statement of who we are as a city. We're a city that values friendly and close-knit neighborhoods, including our LGBTQ neighbors. We value safe schools and happy kids, including LGBTQ kids. We value an ethic of hard work and service, which is precisely what LGBTQ br- people bring when they feel loved and accepted. So, I strongly support this new policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Rotarian Vargas.
Rotarian Vargas. I don't see any other, um, speakers lined up, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. I really want to thank the Diversity and Inclusion Commission for stepping up, um, with Jace, Jessica, and Delia for coming tonight, uh, Jace for speaking and sharing such a powerful story. And I know it's not just a story, this is your testimony. And I just can't help but remember when I served on the school board, and the tough decision my colleagues had, when we were looking at updating our curriculum, when we were look, wanting to not only be compliant with the law, but to be champions of our students, our students who come from all walks of life, who are LGBTQ plus, but weren't represented in textbooks, and what that means to the community, what that means to you, our residents, our staff. It changes you. I remember getting death threats, getting all kinds of crazy calls, emails, people coming and yelling with any, everything you can imagine. But this is about leadership, and this is about really living up to what we say. An inclusive committee, uh, community, a city welcome to all. So, I am proud that this was a community-led effort. And that's really important, that the Diversity and Inclusion Commission brought this to our city. This is what diversity and inclusion looks like. So, I want to share some of my thoughts, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues, but that was just so powerful, and I just want to thank you for that. I'll start to my right with Councilmember Nguyen.
I just want to add that, um, you know, when we selected our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commissioners, all we, all we heard were your voices over the phone. We didn't get a chance to see you, so it's, it's nice to finally see you in person and to hear from you. So, thank you so much for ringing this phone.
Councilmember Spees.
So, a couple of questions for city lawyer. There was a recent, um, oh, gosh, a Supreme Court decision related to Boston and the flying of a flag. Why does that decision not apply here?
Well, the facts of that case are very different than what we have here. The problem with the City of Boston is they had no written policy. It was, for lack of a better term, a free-for-all, as to who could fly the flag in that city. The City of Boston sort of intentionally said, "Anyone who wants to fly a flag in our city on this flag pole can do so," and there were no controls in place. And so, what had happened is along came a flag that the City of Boston chose not to fly, and that spawned the litigation that went all the way to the Supreme Court. And they proponent that flag, said, "Well, wait a minute. Why am I not allowed to fly this flag when everybody else has? You have no rules in place, and therefore, you've created a public forum for free speech, the flags being the speech," because flags are very representative of, of speech and values, as we've kind of seen tonight. And so, in light of that, the cut, the U.S. Supreme Court said, "Because you've created this public forum with no rules and no restrictions and no, no, um, uh, application process as to how the flags are gonna come forward, you, you city do not get to take advantage of what we call the government speech doctrine." And the government speech doctrine is a legal doctrine. Cities, government agencies, they enjoy First Amendment rights, just like private citizens. Cities, government agencies, they enjoy First Amendment rights just like private citizens. And a city, including City of Elk Grove, has the opportunity, if it so chooses, to direct which speech it supports, and that's what this policy does. This policy is saying, "We support this message, but we're not opening this up to a public forum for anything." And so as long as you have a written policy that spells this out, which is what this does, there was one before, of course, this is amending it to add this, it's very, very different than the city of Boston decision because we're not creating a public forum. This is the government speaking a message that it supports and approves.
Okay. And so in the event that a group that presents its desire to have a flag, but their interests are what we might determine to be counter to our DEI goals, right? What is our method to softly put them to the side?
So if you have that happen, if a flag comes forward that is inconsistent with the city's mission, vision, and values as directed by the city council, you have no obligation to fly that flag under this policy. This policy strictly defines which flags are allowed and essentially says others are not unless the city council decides to amend the policy. You always have that opportunity to do that, but this gives you the control to do that. So it still remains the city's property to exercise it in a way that doesn't create a public forum, which is what this is doing, the proposed policy is doing. And so if somebody comes along and asks to fly a flag that is not consistent here, the city and city staff would have the obligation to say, "No, it's not consistent with the policy." City council would have the right to say, "No, we choose not to amend the policy to fly that particular flag because the message does not align with our mission, vision, and values."
Right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to also thank our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission. You know, I think it's amazing that we started this meeting recognizing AAPI heritage much, and we had our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission here, and now here we are at the end of the meeting considering this item. I also, you know, want to just briefly, or excuse me, get into a little bit. All of us up here in the dais, you know, we live public lives via the volunteer work or the work that we do here on the council, but we don't always necessarily share aspects of our lives. But in this particular moment, I'd like to take a moment and share, just because it's relevant to the topic. I myself am the parent of a trans gay child, and so, you know, it's personal to me when I hear these testimonies of how, you know, you grew up and maybe you didn't feel comfortable. And I couldn't fathom, you know, if my child didn't feel safe, you know, going to school or being in their own house where their parents that care for them, you know, where they didn't feel accepted. And so, and having, knowing people in the community as well who also have children that are part of the LGBTQ community, you know, all of us here in Elk Grove, I mean, we're one big family. And so, how can we not, how can we not demonstrate how much we accept our own children? And so, you know, when I see something like this, it's, you know, it's a flag that will just show to the rest of the world and the community that we feel safe here, our kids feel safe here and included here. To me, it's an easy answer, and so I wholeheartedly accept this and for this resolution this evening. And so I hope anyone out there who, you know, is questioning about why are we flying flags, you know, that this one, making this statement is important. It's important to the community, it's important to the future of our kids, and I hope folks will see it for what it is, that it's not politics, that it's about our kids and just loving each other as a community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to need tissue here. Councilmember Hume.
I just want to let the moment sit there for a second because I appreciate, Darren, you sharing that sincerely. As the council member who brought forward the original flag code, I want to explain that a little bit. I did so for two reasons. And the first was to get ahead of the issue that happened in Boston, and so that we had something on the books that said, "Look, we are not going to accept every request. We're not going to sit up here and create most favored nation status where this flag can fly, that flag can't fly, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." But the second is because when I look at that flag over there, I don't just see a combination of colors. I see the fabric that draped my father's coffin. And so I consider the space on those flag poles to be revered air and take all flag code considerations very seriously. That being said, it was never meant to be exclusive or punitive or to not make room for something that is, can be a living, breathing document and be amended. And so, you know, in this instance, I think that this, as was just said, is an opportunity where we can align the second flag pole, which, you know, does not affect the main flag pole where the old glory flies, but, and says, "We see you, and we welcome you." I can't even imagine the sense of pride or, you know, what it means, the significance to see that represented from your local government. And so, I think this is an appropriate amendment. I think that it is something that does align with the city's mission, vision, and values. But I would say that it is not a process that should be taken lightly going forward. This is not something that should be opened up for every flag, for every organization, for every whatever, because as you do, you diminish the significance of the flags that you do, kind of place your weight behind. And so I want to thank everybody for their comments tonight and happy to see this flag fly starting June 1st.
I want to thank my colleagues, especially you, Vice Mayor. I can't think of better parents than you and Denise.
Thank you.
I'm getting a little emotional because I know what it's like. I have a niece who just recently came out as trans, and it's a process. We love Sam. I'm working on my pronoun, so I apologize. And this is all happening in the last few weeks. And so this is for Sam, this is for Jace, this is for Michael, this is for our community, it's for those students that I spoke to so many years ago who wanted their leaders to step up, because that's our job, is to step up and lead. We see you, we celebrate you, we love you. This is truly a city welcome to all, and I'm just so proud to be sitting here right now in this special moment in time. Thank you. So I'll look for a motion. I think you should make the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Wow. All right. Our next item, item 10, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items. We'll start with Councilmember Wynn.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Spees.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Hume.
Sure. I'll be brief. The RT meeting was canceled. There's a connector, Joint Powers meeting this Friday, but I want to talk about the main discussion we had at the sanitation district board meeting this morning, because it was robust and it was a difficult situation that I think could have been made easier had there been a better communication between staff and the policy board at the front end of the process. And so what it circled around is converting the biogas byproduct of treating the sewer and converting that into energy. And it's a significant project, one, because it's renewable energy, it's using that byproduct, and it's creating a heat source that is needed for the operations of the plant. So there's all kinds of good things about that. However, there was a company that does hydrogen fuel cell technology that it's kind of all of those things, plus, if it's done correctly and if the technology is reliable enough to be counted upon. And so I don't know whether or not we're going to go that way because it is new technology, but it is technology that I believe there is public benefit to pursuing in the public arena as a pilot program in order to advance the overall enhancements in that technology. And so, not that we come across these types of things too often here at the city, but I just wanted to put that out there, that if there is a pinch point of a decision path early on where staff can either make a decision on their own, or whether there can be a discussion about just the policy implications, that, you know, particularly in the world of innovation, I see Christopher nodding his head back there as I'm talking about this, that, you know, obviously, we can save ourselves some time if we put those big hairy crazy ideas out up front and then explore whether or not they make sense rather than dismiss them and then somebody comes on at the 11th hour and we have to go back and start from scratch again. So I thought it was a pretty good discussion this morning, and so it just made me think that we can maybe be a little bit smarter if we consider big things at the front end. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a very robust conversation at our last SECOG meeting, but I think it's too much details to talk here, but I just want to make folks aware of it, or council aware of it. But I do want to have a couple of things I'd like council consensus on to bring back. One of them was brought to my attention by our own Planning Commissioner Fernandez, Commissioner Fernandez, reviewing, asking our animal control, excuse me, folks to bring back a review of the nuisance animal ordinance. It sounds like it's pretty archaic, requiring handwritten, right, logs of dogs barking and things like that. So I think there's, if we could get consensus to have staff look at it and see if we can...
Bless you.
Bless you. If we can see how we can modernize this, similar to what, you know, we have with our app that we heard about earlier tonight. Would that be all right?
Report of barking dog.
Yeah, I recall seeing that. I'd like to have that discussion as well.
Yes, I would agree, and if I recall, our staff did respond, but I'm definitely more interested in having a revisit to see how best we can update something that might be outdated.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
So that's at least three right there for coming back.
Okay. Thank you. And then the second one, I know all of you have seen this too, the recipient, we have had at least one constituent that has, on several occasions, been passed over on the RT route because the service has been canceled. And, you know, we, RT is a great partner. However, there's some things here I think we need to put some attention on, and I would really appreciate maybe asking RT to come brief to our council and give us a briefing on how the operations are going, and of course, we'd love to hear from, you know, our own staff as well and see how we can improve service in those areas.
Yeah, I know that from the community's perspective, you know, that this is our responsibility. And so when someone is trying to get to work, trying to get to school, and they can't, that adds significant challenges and burdens. So I do think it would be, you know, regardless of how and why, it's really more procedural and so that there is more awareness on some of these decisions and how routes are canceled and things like that, and what we can do to mitigate and so forth. So I definitely would be supportive of seeing that. Do we have another colleague? Okay, so we have at least three who would like to see it come back.
So we have reached out to RT and exposed the concerns. We've asked for a meeting with their upper management, so hopefully that'll get scheduled in the next couple of weeks. We also have a new staff person, Mike Cost, obviously, has been gone for a while, so we have a new staff person starting in the next couple of weeks, so we're going to introduce that individual to the RT staff as well, and then we could let them know of the council's request to come and make a little presentation report on the service levels.
Yeah, and I've let Chris Flores, RT, know as much. So, and, you know, if you, in your meeting with RT, if you find, if staff just wants, our staff wants to come brief us, and, you know, that's fine too, but I'd like to hear directly from them. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Just briefly, I think Councilmember Hume gave an excellent update on regional stand. STA, we are looking for a new executive director, so I'll be on panel tomorrow to do a series of interviews. Other than that, I'll waive the rest of my report. And as we get ready here to adjourn, I do want to adjourn two things. One, of course, in memory of those, the students that were killed and the teachers that we lost in Texas, our heart goes out to the families, and I just can't imagine what that pain looks like, nor does anybody want to. But our country is grieving, and we're grieving with them. And then locally, we had a student, a Kasumna Oaks High School student, who was also gunned down in Berkeley. And yesterday, there was some measurement of closure with the plea agreement. So I would also like to adjourn in the memory of Seth Smith, who was beloved student of Kasumna Oaks High School, particularly the Visual and Performing Arts Department, that while he's gone, he's not forgotten, and may all of their memories be a blessing to their families. Thank you, everyone.